I call to order the school committee meeting of November 10th, 2025. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we now take a moment of silence to honor Anne Cavalo, a student in our high school who sadly died in a car accident a week and a half ago. Thank you. Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther?
John Noons?
Yep.
Kathleen Emerald?
Here.
Chris Oliver?
Here.
Mary Beckwith?
Here.
Beth Coughlin?
Here. This meeting is being recorded and it will be rebroadcast on DCTV and can be streamed on their YouTube channel at any time. Dr. Saban McGuire, do you have some comments?
Thank you, Chair Coughlin. So, we wanted to take a moment before the start of the meeting to acknowledge the tragic loss in our school community. It really was something that, I would say, had huge impact on the school community. And by all accounts, our student Anne de Cavalo was a dedicated learner. She was very well-liked. She was deeply respected by both her classmates and her teachers. We also want to take a moment to recognize the remarkable response of our high school faculty and staff, not only here at the high school, but really across the district for folks, including our adjustment counselors, Mrs. Denicio, our principal, again, our administrative staff here at the high school, who really came together to support not only our students, staff, faculty, but really each other. And I think that from organizing spaces, you know, I think Katie Malloy, who was able to provide some refreshments here and use this library really as a place of healing for folks to come together and to experience what was really, truly a tragic loss for our school community. And but that's what we're about, right? Embodding a caring community. But on the behalf of the school district, the school department, we do want to extend our heartfelt condolences to Anne's family and to her friends and to everyone in the community who are grieving her loss. And we will support each other through this loss, and that really is what we do when we come together as part of One Dartmouth. So I just want to acknowledge all the folks that were involved and will continue to be involved in the support of Anne, her family, friends, and this school community. So, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We now welcome public comment from the audience on any topic on this evening's agenda. We have allowed 10 minutes for this. Please approach the mic, state your name, and keep your comments brief.
Good evening, Nathan Silva. Speaking on behalf of myself, which I think is a disclaimer I'm supposed to make these days. But as we're entering into budgeting season, I wanted to come in and sort of give you the heads up of what I'm going to be advocating for this year. The message is pretty simple. Please ask for what you need. Do not negotiate against yourselves and do not settle for less. And I get it, we're One Dartmouth and there's one pot of money that the whole community needs to share. But my perception is that the school's willingness to play nicely has been taken advantage of in recent history. And nowhere is that more evident than when we look at the departmental budget growth over the past five years, where the school's budget has increased by about 20%, whereas many, many other departments have increased by 30, 40, 50, 60, even 70% in more than one instance. That, to me, is not One Dartmouth, right? Now, I'm glad to hear that we have improved relationships between the schools and the new town administration. That's good, and I encourage that to continue. But I don't want to lose sight of what has happened in the past. So please, ask for what you need to truly maintain level services, bearing in mind that level services this year is a significant reduction in services from just a couple of years ago. And I know I'm coming up on my two minutes, but if you'd indulge me for one more, I'd like to share a quick story from the springtime, if that's okay. So, in the spring, when I was preparing the amendment that I offered at town meeting, I thought it would be a good idea to give a heads up to a couple of the departments that would be mostly affected by the budget modifications I was proposing, namely, the police department and DPW. So I had a meeting with the police chief and with Mr. Barber to sort of give them the heads up of what I was planning. I didn't want to blindside them. I wanted them to have time to prepare their thoughts and their response to what I was about to do and have plenty of time to do so. So we had cordial conversation. They didn't necessarily agree with what I was proposing, but I think they at least understood where I was coming from. But at the end of one of those conversations, he looked at me and said, "You know, I'm going to be fighting for my budget." And I said, "I know that, and you wouldn't be doing your job if you didn't, and I expect you to." My expectation of this group, this committee, is the same, right? Fight for your budget. Fight for our children's budget. There is a lot of support. I think more support than I think we previously might have known for the schools in this town. And we're behind you in that fight. So please, do fight for our budget, because if we're not doing it, I'm not sure who's going to. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Robin De La Fuente. I have three kids at Dartmouth Middle School. I've come before you many times, and I will mimic a lot of what Nate has to say, but I wanted to just remind you all that you have parent support. We want you to fight for what you need, and we want to be here to show you that support. Get in front of them, spell it out. It's too important. We can't keep losing our teachers. We're not going to get new teachers in if we don't have fair packages to offer. We really need to just lay down the budget that you need to operate and to maintain so our students aren't suffering for it. Thank you for your time, as always. Thank you.
And I believe there's nobody else interested in talking. Thank you. We move to approval of the minutes, regular and executive minutes for October 27th, 2025.
So moved on the regular?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Mr. Noons. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimously passing. And for the executive?
So move, Madam Chair, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Noons, second by Ms. Beckwith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Another unanimous vote in favor. And now we welcome our student representative report from Andrew Maniz.
Yeah, so thank you for having me tonight. And I'm going to be talking about a couple of things that we have going on around the school. Have a very exciting month on tap, as you know. So we recently held our blood drive on October 28th, which was a huge success. We had many students and staff participating. We had our Young Athletes Day on Wednesday, November 5th, and this was the second annual of that event. And that brought in kids from Cushman to collaborate with our preschoolers, to collaborate with our Unified Basketball and Unified PE classes. And then upcoming, we have Homecoming and the Superlative Dance, which is on November 15th. Everyone's very excited for that. We have Spirit Week, and we also have the annual Key Club Food Drive, as well as the pep rally, which is probably everyone's favorite event of the year. And then our fall sports and activities, all of our athletic teams made the playoffs, which was very exciting. Our boys' soccer is still in the tournament, which they're making their deepest playoff run since 2017. And over the weekend, our marching band competed to earn a bronze medal at MetLife Stadium for the US Band's National Championships. And the Student Advisory Committee is very excited because we're in the process of putting together a student experience report, which we hope at some point to present to all of you, as well as the administration. So, yeah, this busy month, lot going on.
Terrific. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have homework or sleep to catch up on, you're welcome to leave.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, we're going to take part of the superintendent's update out of order right now.
That's why I said maybe Andrew would want to stay, since it's the perfect segue into where we're going to invite Marielle and Alex up to talk about the band competition this past weekend, because I know that we really want to highlight and celebrate what the band accomplished this weekend. So please come on up.
So what we have for you here is our official bronze medal third-place trophy, as well as our high color guard and high percussion trophies. What these mean is that we had the best color guard and best percussion sections in our division, so we are incredibly proud. We're coming to you tonight with the most, absolute most pride and gratitude for our students. They performed their hearts out, and it was such a pleasure to get to watch them show off all of the hard work that they did this season, especially Andrew.
That's why I wanted you to stay, Andrew, so you could hear that.
It was nice to hear you talk about us like that. Thank you, Andrew. Yeah, so we started off with a busy weekend. We left the high school at 2:00 a.m. Saturday morning. So we drove down to New Jersey. We got to MetLife Stadium around 5:30, and we performed at 8:00 a.m. We were very proud to be the first band on to kind of set the tone of the day. After that, we headed back on the bus to Ellis Island, and we went to see the Statue of Liberty, which was an incredible experience. It was the most perfect day. The sun was shining, the temperature was great. It was straight out of a movie. And then we finished off our day by heading to Dave and Buster's for a little bit of team building, team bonding, one last chance to see each other and hang out with each other as a band for the season. Then the next morning, we, where did we go after that?
In the morning, we went to...
Went to Times Square.
Oh, Times Square, that's right. We had a little bit of time to explore the city. The students were able to choose where they wanted to eat and got to hang out with their chaperone groups. And then we finished our day by seeing the Harry Potter play, which was incredible and a lesson in the performing arts. So it was an incredible trip, and we just want to express our gratitude for you all for making this happen for us and for supporting us along the way, and for our wonderful students and giving us a platform to work with such incredible young minds. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work to you, good work to all of the students.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you. Next up, we have some presentations.
We do. So I think that District Strategic Plan Monitoring Update is first?
Yes.
Okay. So let me see.
You can change that if you want, but...
No.
It's not doing anything.
Perhaps I could have some technical...
Dallas Horner's on his way.
Technical support, please. Thank you. So, thank you, Chair Coughlin. So, as we always do, whenever we talk about the District Strategic Plan, we like to start off by just grounding us in the mission, the vision, the strategic focus areas, and what our core values are. As I've said, and I know it's, I know that I'm a broken record, but each one of these components of our strategic plan are truly critical in keeping this plan not only, it's not a plan, it's actually what's happening out in our schools. I've had the opportunity now to meet with two of our PTOs, both the middle school and the high school, and also with the middle school faculty, to give them updates as to where we are. So this is my first time having the opportunity to do that publicly and with the committee. But we've started each one of our presentations by grounding us in exactly where we are and how we came to the point where we have a five-year plan. Of course, we're in the second year of that plan, and you remember the phases that we went through in order to come together to produce a comprehensive strategic plan that we feel is every, that every member of the school community can have some ownership of or does have ownership of. One of the things that we committed to doing with the committee and with the public and with our faculty and with our families is that we would provide on a regular basis a strategic plan monitoring update. And so here is the, again, color-coded, you'll see, example of how we've started to construct means of reporting out to the public and to the committee where we are in the implementation of our plan. One of the things that we did over the summer, both as a central office leadership team, as a principal leadership team, and as a district leadership team, is we made sure that we spent time going through our district strategic plan and starting to put together really a formal process for reporting it out publicly. And so this is a start for us, and we just want you to recognize that and know that we will be updating and I think we'll be refining this process as we continue to find ways to improve the way that we're reporting out. And so what you'll see here is is pretty basic, not yet started, in process and implementing. And you'll see that throughout each one of the focus areas. So as you know, focus area one is teaching and learning. You know, this is the one that we spend a lot of time talking about here and presenting on. You'll hear an MCAS update presentation just this evening that will connect to this district strategic plan and one of the ways that we're reporting out what our progress is to date. So what you see is there are high-level initiatives, teaching and learning one, teaching and learning two, teaching and learning three. And what you see on the opposite side of that slide is the key action steps that have been taken to date. And so here we have developed a curriculum development cycle, and that has been established. It is ongoing. You're never done with your curriculum development cycle. And that's why having a cycle is so important, because as we've said in the past, we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we're looking at every content in subject area across the district at the same time and trying to replace resources with high-quality instructional materials, which is the next bullet, where I said, where we say that we're in various stages of horizontal and vertical alignment. Examples of that, again, SOMOS, which is the World Language Program here at the high school, Open SIED, the work that's being done at the middle school, CKLA, which I know you've heard quite a bit about and will continue to throughout the course of the year, and we're working on Carnegie Math here at the high school as well. So as far as professional development is concerned, really important, you've heard us talk about this, you heard Katie and Ross talk about this just a couple of weeks ago in giving you an overview of where we are in connecting our professional development, not only the committee, but the committee's work is about connecting the professional development to the actual work that we're asking our faculty members to be out in their in our classrooms and other places and spaces and schools. And so how are we supporting them in order to be able to do that effectively? And one thing that we recognize, and we're not always perfect, I just want to remind folks that we are human business. And so, you know, we have trials and errors. We try things, we try them in good faith, and then we listen to each other and we refine processes along the way. But the PD committee, I think, one of the things that we heard from the field was, oh, we're really missing having the, what they called before me, strands in professional development for part of the school year. And so that's something through the Professional Development Committee that, and through surveys, surveys that we conducted through the district that we established as a priority. So we will be re, we're just reinstituting, reimplementing that for this year. And the other thing, and I know you heard this, but I'll continue again, the broken record that I believe in, is there is a professional learning time plan that has been developed at every school and at the district level. And it's basically a year at a glance. Again, I remind people that we're not, we're not a static organization. There are things that come up throughout the course of the year where we may need to make adjustments based on something that, I mean, that could come out through the state at any given moment, that we see as being a glaring need in the district. And that's where you have to be flexible and ready to sometimes to pivot and maybe go in a different direction. But the point is that we have consistency and that our professional development is connected to the work that we're doing in our schools. Pre-K program has been redesigned, as I said. You've heard Ms. Denicio, Mrs. Redlon, talk about this. We know that there are speed bumps along the way, but at the same time, one of the things that we are seeing is that those decisions that you helped us make, that you supported us, are starting to really take shape in a way that are having positive impact on our most fragile and newest learners to our school district. So the professional learning plans, I bring them up again because I don't think there's anything really more important that we do in education than provide our faculty and staff with professional learning in a way that is clearly connected to the implementation of a new curriculum. For example, just this past week, and I was going to talk about this in my superintendent update, so I'll try not to repeat myself when I get there, but we had a consultant, professional learning consultant from Amplify, which is the vendor that produces CKLA in the district. So not just providing professional development from afar, but in the district, in schools, in classrooms, working alongside, listening to teachers, listening to faculty at the school level to see and to hear where we're finding success and where we're still finding challenges and helping us to address that along the way. So you see in the green box that we have 13 action steps identified, two implemented, six in process, and five not yet started. And I would remind you and me, because when I get anxiety and say not yet started, I get a little anxiety about that, and I have to remind myself and our team and the district that this is a five-year plan, not a one or a two-year plan. And it's not meant to all be done at once, because what happens then is you get something that we're all familiar with in our field, and that's called initiative overload. And you have to be really careful to protect yourself from that. Under focus area two, Safe and Supportive Schools. Again, we talk about this at every committee meeting, but you see that we have a focus around building the capacity of students and staff and support social emotional wellness. We recognize that that is something that has to be ongoing. We've introduced a new, so I'll take that initiative and connect it to a key action step, which is around Wayfinder, the SEL curriculum that's being embedded into the DHS advisory program. But at the same time, we recognize that the, there are increasing needs of our students. And one of the ways the committee supported us in thinking about strategically about that in the, at the district level was helping to provide us with the funding to bring in a position. Or if you remember that position now, we've had it in the district for, I think, a year and a half. And that is a person who is out supporting the social emotional learning of some of our, what we're finding, high-need students who, not only do our students need some extra support, but our teachers do as well. So that's work that we appreciate the committee has done and supported us on, and those are things that we'll be talking about as we enter into the budget cycle. Enhancing a sense of pride and culture that embrace One Dartmouth. You see, we've made intentional efforts to do that. We've done that through, we've introduced a compass newsletter at the district level. The Green Apple Award has been established. And those are, those are, those are important ways for us to communicate not only our appreciation for our staff, faculty, the work that goes on here, but it's a way for us, in some ways, I don't mean to say that it's simple, but it is sometimes, it's the little things that we do that recognize folks that can really make a difference in supporting sometimes, you know, the hard work that goes on. Professional development is always there, focusing on culturally and intellectually affirming practices. We do that with Lynch Leadership Academy, and that's work that we're doing on an ongoing basis with our district leadership team. You've heard just last, at the last meeting, Mrs. Redlon updated you as to where we are with district and school-based crisis management teams. And again, I will bring that back to the crisis that we just had at the high school, where we did suffer, you know, it was, it was a very significant event that happened over a weekend. where we did suffer, you know, it was, it was a very significant event that happened over a weekend. And people knew what to do. We were mobilized. People knew who to call. Those are the kinds of systems that you have to have in place in order to best support your school community, when unfortunately and sadly, things do happen. And how are we equipped to be able to support people as, as in our mostly, you know, our kids, staff, faculty, as they return to school on Monday morning? And so district comprehensive emergency management, again, those are all things that you've heard about. But you see, where are we in process? Eleven action steps, four implemented, six in process, one not yet started. Focus area three, family and community engagement, has been something that's really important to us. We are always striving to find different ways to connect with our families. Our schools do a really good job with this. They truly do. The individual schools and the way that they connect and open their doors to families and community and the way that our teachers reach out on a consistent basis is something, I think, to be commended. At the same time, at the district level, how are we doing that? One of the ways that, that I'm doing that as a superintendent is going out to PTO meetings. It's one way for me to go to them. Another way is through just offering some, just like low-stress kind of opportunities to meet with families. I find out a lot about what's going on in the community by going to football games, by going to band performances, by sitting in the stands at a volleyball game or at a soccer game. And, and I don't mean that people, the folks in the community approach me to complain because that's not what happens. It's more a matter of just having a conversation and hearing what people are thinking about in an informal way. So we will continue to focus on building relationships with families. I do want to commend again Jonathan and his team and the technology folks across the district, who I think are utilizing Parents Square more effectively as, as we've gotten more comfortable with its use. And I think we updated you on that last week or at the last meeting. But just to keep it front and center as something that we think has been really important. Around focus area four, budget and capital improvements. I mean, our two, hearing of the visitors, folks are talking about this, right? So that's one way I think you can see that we've lifted our strategic plan in a really public way. I so appreciate the families that have taken an active role in participating in town meeting and all that goes along with that and coming here and speaking at school committee and being part of PTOs, but communicating and advocating for the instructional operational needs of the district. That's what they just asked us to do. That is what we do on an ongoing basis. That's part of why we have a strategic plan, so we can very clearly articulate to the community what it is that we need as a district to be successful with our students. Communicating and activ, and advocating for facility, you see some of the key action steps. The district-wide operating budget developed, approved by school committee and town meeting and implemented. And we are very grateful for those relationships that, that Mr. Silva mentioned earlier. And we're going to continue to work on them. We have Mr. Kylie involved in the long-range capital planning team. And there is a 50-year plan in place. And that is, that sounds so long off, but if you don't have a plan, and we've said that, if you don't have any goals, how are you going to get there? If you don't have a plan in place, then nothing is going to move forward. So I appreciate that that might seem long, so long-range that people maybe can't get their minds around it, but it is important to have it and to keep it at the forefront of the work. Same thing with the 10-year plan, developed, approved by this committee. You've heard us talk about HVAC upgrades. The DHS auditorium upgrades have happened. So again, back to the action steps, eight. We're really in, the thing is about this, we've made a lot of progress. We've put everything in motion. So now it's about seeing things through and making sure that they do actually happen. I just remind people that there was a, there really truly was a large group of folks that were involved in the development of this strategic plan. And although there are, might seem like a small number here, it's really a great cross-section of the entire school community, whether it's that you're represented as an educator, as a staff member, as a community member, as a student, the student that we had here tonight. Andrew Moniz was on this team, and he definitely used his voice. So a finance committee, we had select board. We really did strive to make sure that we had representation. And that work, I think, was really important in helping us to successfully launch the strategic plan. And so that is our update. And I'll have a couple of things more for you when I do my superintendent update. But this is sort of a high, I think, a high-level update as to where we are in meeting the goals of our plan.
Thank you. I'm impressed with how much has gotten done.
Thank you. We have to remind ourselves that we have done it.
And I like that a lot is in process. Any questions from anyone?
No, great presentation.
Yes, great presentation. Thank you.
A lot done in a short period of time, if you think about it.
Yes, much left to do.
Oh, yeah.
Always.
Can I just ask how often we'll get this type of update, do you think?
We haven't really planned that out, but as often as, as you like. If, we should do it strategically, because what you're going to hear me talk about in our superintendent update is really this in smaller pieces to keep you sort of updated on an ongoing basis. But this gives you more of a global view of where we are, so we could do it as many times as the committee wishes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. And now we're going to have a review of the district MCAS results.
Yes, Mrs. Paveo is going to come up and give us an overall report of the district MCAS results. We did, Mrs. Paveo, we did get another invitation to join
Yes, I know.
The commissioner's
That's exciting.
Team to present about some of the strategies we use to return to pre-pandemic levels in math for grades three through eight.
I still have my thunder on my last slide.
Excellent.
We'll talk a little bit more about that. Good evening, everybody. So as Dr. Saban McGuire alluded to before, all of our work is grounded in the strategic plan. And so this is no exception to that. We're going to talk tonight, really in, in zeroing in on the teaching and learning bucket, is that's where I spend the most of my time. But looking at that vertical and horizontal alignment of curriculum is the curriculum is going to drive how our students are performing, right? And we have two action steps in there around identifying sources of data to look at our student achievement and creating that data dashboard. And certainly our MCAS scores are a key source of data that we look at when we're talking about student achievement. So again, this is a high-level overview. And so this is old news for the five of you. But for maybe some folks who are riveted and watching from home, we talk about what MCAS is, remembering that it is the Massachusetts Comprehensive Assessment System. It has been around in response since the ed reform in the late 90s. And it is a requirement that we assess our students in grades three through eight in ELA in math, and our students in five and eight in math. And our students in grade 10 are still assessing, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Our MCAS, really, our kids fall into one of four categories, whether they are exceeding the standard, meeting the standard, progressing towards the standard, partially meeting the standard, or not meeting the standard. And so why does it matter? Why are we doing this standardized testing? It is a snapshot in time of how our students are doing. And yes, it is a snapshot, and yes, it is one assessment, but it's an assessment that looks at the standards overall. And it gives us a good idea of some areas of strength for our students and some areas where we still have some work to do. And also in the secondary level, and I'm going to say this is Dr. Tebow's area of forte, so I'm going to do my very best to talk about some of the secondary stuff tonight. But it is still used to lead to reduced scholarship, reduced college costs and scholarship opportunities for students. So what's new? There are really three big things with the spring assessment that I want to talk to you about tonight. So if we think back to just about a year ago, right now, in November of 2024, question two repealed the MCAS as a graduation requirement. And so the, to think that that didn't have impact would just not be accurate. And I'll talk a little bit more at the high school level specifically about how the impact was seen through some of our students. But it is no longer a requirement to graduate, but we still assess our students in grades 10. There was an emphasis this year on returning to pre-pandemic levels. And so the last year of what they consider to be pre-pandemic data is the year 2019. So you'll hear a lot of comparison data between 2025 and 2019 and how our students are doing. And then at grade eight, this was the first year that we administered the civics assessment to our grade eight students across the Commonwealth. And so we'll take a look at that as well. This sort of shows the timeline over those six years, right? Since that pre-pandemic time, obviously in 2019 was the last, what we'll call, normal administration of MCAS before things really started to shift. In 2020, schools were closed, obviously, and MCAS was not administered to any students. In 2021, testing was resumed, but in a, in a hybrid model, students took one session as opposed to the two at the elementary level, and similarly at the middle school and high school. It was, it was administered in the full, in its full form at the high school, because at that point, it still was a graduation requirement. And then in 2022, full MCAS administration resumed. In 2023, I think the state was very hopeful that we were sort of putting this whole global pandemic behind us. And then what we learned very quickly was that this is, as we were looking at some of our youngest learners impacted entering our testing grades, that we really had a long way to go. And the same was true last year, that we are continuing to feel the effects of COVID-19 or not back quite yet to where we were before that. And as you heard me say, we're really starting to look now at how we are in 2025 compared to 2019. So I'm going to first talk about the state at a higher level. And while I know it's tempting to jump right into Dartmouth, I think we have to really start at the state level and get an idea of how our, how our state is doing as a, as a whole. And then we can look at our district and start to think about how we do comparatively. So this is a chart we've seen before. We really try to kind of keep things consistent in the way that we're giving our data. And so it's a way to teach people how to look at it and then, you know, update it with the most recent information. So as you heard me say before, there are four categories of achievement for our students, exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, or not meeting. We really want to narrow in on the meeting and exceeding columns. Obviously, it's where we want our students to be. There's an average scale score at that last column. And the second column from the right is the average SGP. The state SGP is 50, because that's what sets the SGP for the rest of the state. And just as a reminder, student growth percentile is a way to look at how students who are performing similarly on one test do the next year. So the state will take students who performed at a similar level, an achievement level, and group those students together and then say, compared to those other students in that bucket with you, how did you grow? So it's an important number for some of our students, because even if they're high achieving, we want them to continue to grow. And for some of our students who are struggling students, who might not be making the achievement level that we would like them to, they're showing a lot of growth. And so it's important to pay attention both to our achievement and to our growth. The trends across the Commonwealth are that ELA scores remained relatively flat. The state saw, did see some gains in grades three through eight in the sharpest incline in grade seven from last year to this year. They had a six-point growth in the average score for grade seven, but all grade levels remain behind that pre-pandemic level in 2019. In math, again, our scores were relatively flat across the state compared to 2024 results. And again, all grade levels remain behind where they were in 2019. In science and technology, again, there were some mixed results. Actually, grade five at the state level saw some mild improvement, while grades, like grades eight and 10 saw a mild drop. And I'll pause here and talk about some of the impact of that question two that we mentioned. So when the state was releasing this information, they were clear to say that, you know, our students in grade 10 have always had quite the motivation to perform as it was a graduation requirement. And while I think our kids in grades three through eight have always done a really good job of understanding the importance of MCAS, and we help them to understand that it helps us to help them, right? I've always told my kids as a student, when I was a teacher, that this is really a look at our teachers and at our teaching and at our learning, and so how we can best help support you. I think we need to start doing a good job of helping our 10th graders to understand that even without this as a requirement, it's still a really important test. And so across the Commonwealth, we're going to start trying to really be able to spread that message because without that requirement, across the state, there was a pretty sharp decline in grade 10. And so they saw the highest number of blank questions, students who just sort of clicked through. And so we have to just do, we have to do our due diligence of building that same sort of understanding. And be that as it may, our students still did pretty well, right? And so we'll get into our, into how our students did. But just build that same level of understanding and commitment in our students in grade 10 that our students have all the way through. And so when we look at Dartmouth Public Schools, this is the same chart with our kids here in Dartmouth. And you'll see that in our students in grades three through eight, you know, we are at 51% of our students meeting or exceeding the standard in ELA. And while we'd like to be above that half threshold, obviously, it's a number that we would like to see increase. And so we will continue to do some of that work. All of our students in grades three through eight, three through eight are above the state standard, right? So where the state, where I just showed you on the previous slide, where our state is, our students are performing at or higher than the state across all areas in, in ELA. In three through eight, it's 51%, as opposed to 41 at the state. And in grade 10, it's still at 62% as opposed to 51 at the state. In math, I'm going to flip forward here. Our students who are meeting or exceeding, again, are above the state, 54% of our students, as opposed to 41. And again, our 10, our grade 10 students are above the state, 52% versus 45. Science is an area that we continue to look at when we start talking a little bit about our high-quality instructional materials, right? This is an area that we are looking into in the elementary levels. We have our Open Say Ed at the middle school. And so we are excited to see some of the impact that that will have on our future students, knowing that we always feel a little bit of that implementation dip when we bring something new in. But our grade five students are, continue to be above the state, 55% versus 46. We are a little bit below the state in grade eight, and our high school students are above the state, 46 versus 42. So one area that we also like to take a look at is our students who are considered high needs. And so as a reminder, to be in that high needs category are our students who are low-income, English language learners, or students with disabilities. Any and/or all of those categories lump you into that category of students that are considered high needs. And so, you know, it's of importance to us because we have a lot of students in that category. And I think sometimes we don't realize the number of students. And so that last column will give you the number of students in our, in that category, in our high needs group. And, you know, I think we are outperforming the high-needs groups across the state. It is an area that, when we talk about growth and when we talk about continuing to want to see our students succeed, we will continue to push the number of students meeting and exceeding. But we are, we are exceedingly proud of our commitment to working with students. And I'm going to come back right to that part of our strategic plan when we talk about, you know, teaching and learning, but also safe and supportive schools. So these two areas speak to the importance of meeting the needs of all students. And not just by supporting our students, but by supporting our educators in developing and implementing best practices and tiered systems of support for our students. So these are our sort of high-needs trends, as you see. Our number of students are exceeding the state in ELA and in math and in science. So this is where I'm going to talk about grade eight. I'm going to ask for your patience. So the new civics assessment. So the civics assessment is a direct outcome of the state's 2018 Act to Promote Enhanced Civic Engagement in Students. It places a high value on civic reasoning. And so it has two components. The assessment has really just two components. It has a, and of course, It has a end-of-course test, is what it's called, where it covers the breadth of the standards, the grade eight civic standards. And then it has a performance task component where it zeroes in on one of those specific topics, and students must, students do some reading of primary and secondary sources, they analyze them, and then they have to write a constructed response that explains the civics concepts and support that. And so what I do in my world is look at where our students need to be, and I think about how we at the elementary level can support that work. And so recently, we went to the Masque Conference, and I went to a really great breakout about civics and STEM in the elementary level. And so we're starting to look at some of those resources. Because the reality is, just because this is an assessed thing in eighth grade, the responsibility does not live in the eighth grade, right? So all of these things that we do, all of our MCAS assessments, really are things that we start thinking about when our kids enter school, not in the form of thinking of it through a test, the lens of a test, thinking of it as it's an assessment that reflects the standards. And so we need to make sure, it's incumbent on us to make sure that our instruction and our instructional tools are reflective of the standards, and so that when they get to grade eight, that it's not something that the burden falls strictly on our grade eight instructors. And so this is like brand-new news, right? Brand-new information. So we have a very limited slide of information for the civics results, but you can see that in that first row across is how our students in Dartmouth did versus our students at the state. And so as a whole, as a Commonwealth, we certainly have some work to do in making sure that our students are able to reflect their knowledge of the civics standards. So there's a phrase that I love a lot. We say, "So what, now what?", right? And so our results are what our results are. It's a snapshot in time. It's what our students did on those particular days. So but the real work comes in the "now what", right? So that's what happened on those days. Those are the results. What do we do with them? And that's the real important thing when we start to talk about data analysis. Oh, sorry, I skipped a really important slide before. I got excited about what we're going to do, but we should probably talk about how Dartmouth does in comparison to some of our similar districts, and those are our DART schools. I do just want to call out, because I was reviewing this earlier today, and I was like, wait a second, what is Carver doing that they have a 79 and 80 SGP? That is a typo. That is the number of students included in those columns. And while they still had a good SGP, it is not 79 and 80 because I was already on the phone, like, trying to find out what they were doing. But you'll see that Dartmouth really continues to hold its own in comparison to our DART schools. And as a reminder, our DART schools, our schools that this Commonwealth sees as comparative when you're talking either about enrollment or low income, or our students with disabilities, or our ELL, those are all those acronyms up at the top, or abbreviations. And so you'll see that really, you know, in ELA, only Easton outperformed our students in three to eight. Easton is a district that we are aware of and we are talking to, and they continue to, right? It's a goal to reach for us, and we're going to continue to kind of look at some of the things that they are doing over there and, you know, figure out how we can replicate the things that we think might work here. In math, again, just Easton and Oh, Nauset for ELA as well, but just Easton in math. And really, you know, I'm not going to go through them line by line, but Dartmouth has a lot to be very proud of. Our students are working very hard, and compared to other districts that have similar demographics as us, we really continue to stand out and hold our own. So now I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing with the information, right? So it really becomes a five-step process. This is the stuff that really kind of makes me excited. When we talk about professional learning and when we talk about teaching and learning, it really kind of starts here, right? And so we engage our schools in these data inquiry cycles. And so this is happening at our school level, this is happening at our district level, with some of our curriculum teams, with, I was with Mrs. McHenry today, looking at her presentation to give her team at Potter. And so we have to help our teachers to really dig in and understand this data. And to my point earlier, right? So it's not just our third, fourth, and fifth-grade teachers at the elementary level who are looking at MCAS data. Our kindergarten teachers are looking at it, our first-grade teachers are looking at it, they're seeing their place in what they're doing and how it grows into our tested grade levels. We look at trends, right? We look for patterns and trends across the district, across our schools, across our grade levels, for things that pop up, on what are things that we are doing exceedingly well? What are some things that the state is doing better than us? What are some standards that are not, we're really just not holding our own on, or what are some that we're doing really well? And where do those live in our curricular materials? And that goes right into aligning our curriculum and our resources. Also, out of Masque, I am doing some work with Liz Vosie, who's one of our instructional technology specialists, to look at our MCAS data, to look at our curriculum materials, to look at our standards, and let the power of robots, let AI do some of that real deep crosswalk work that is very arduous and takes people a ton of time to do and computers can do in a minute, right? And so really embracing the technology on how it can help us to analyze the data so that we can get to that "now what" point. It helps us with some of that "so what"? It helps us with some of that problem of practice and some of the root cause analyses so that we can get to the "now what" and "what do we do next"? Some of those things that we do next, right? We provide professional learning. We look at areas that we need to strengthen, that we need to bolster, and we support our students and our staff with professional learning around those areas. And really, we have to monitor our progress because, again, this is one snapshot of time, and it isn't the end-all, be-all. But if we look at some of our progress monitoring, if we look at some of our formative assessments that we're doing in our classrooms and our assessment data from our curricular materials, we should see patterns and trends over time and be able to really look at, you know, I always say, when we get our MCAS scores, it shouldn't be a big shock, right? We should know going into it how our students are performing. So I always like to end on a high note. And so as Dr. Saber McGuire alluded to before, and as I said, there was quite an emphasis placed this year on returning to pre-pandemic levels of achievement. And the state recognized 63 districts that have met or exceeded their 2019 achievement levels in math and/or ELA in grades three through eight. And we are certainly unbelievably proud of our district to be one of those 63 who has returned to pre-pandemic levels in math in grades three through eight. And so we certainly are really appreciative of our elementary and middle school folks and the work that they've been doing over the last six years to continue to get our students where they need to be. And with that, I will take any questions that you have. Pre-K to five, no, just kidding.
Thank you very much. We do have a lot to be proud of.
We do.
Yes, I know that we have a lot of new curriculum, and what I'm hoping is we're going to see a bump in a year or two.
Yeah.
For those who are not meeting or partially meeting.
Yeah, I wholly agree with you, and I am cautiously so unbelievably optimistic about, so our students who are this year's fifth graders are the students who started in kindergarten with Bridges. And our third and fourth grade math scores, if you want to disaggregate some of that three to eight data, I'm happy to sit and chat with anyone about it, our math scores in three and four from last year, who are our students who started with Bridges. It looks really solid. And for me, what that means is that our students, when we talk about that conceptual understanding piece, it's exactly what I was saying. This is not a burden of grades three through eight for testing. This starts right from the minute they get into our schools. And we talk about that horizontal and that vertical alignment, right? It's a trajectory, it's a journey. So this is a reflection of where we are on that journey with our students, but it starts the minute they get in with us. So I agree, and I am also very cautiously optimistic that that trend will continue.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Mr. News.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Paveo. Do we have any Adam, or have you been able to determine, or does the state let us know? Do we have any Abigail Adam, John and Abigail Adam Award winners this year?
That's a high school question, Mr. News. I'm going to say Dr. Saber McGuire, I believe we do.
We definitely have Abigail and Adam scholarships.
We have had many, many. No, I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek, and we've had, we've had...
No, we definitely do. And actually, that's one of, you know, the things that we talk to families about is that taking the MCAS, even though it's not a graduation requirement, as our students are preparing or their college applications, it's definitely something to highlight on your college application that you were, especially if you're going to a state school, because as far as those awards are concerned, there's still something that's monetarily attached to that award. And so that has stayed in place. And we definitely have a number of students who were recognized. I don't know the exact number offhand, but certainly.
That's fine, thank you. And my last question, if my memory's any good from last year, are we able to drill down on the questions that there were issues?
Well, last year, they didn't release any questions. And so there is a limited view of what you can really dig into. What you can do is dig in by standard, right? And so you can, we do, this is obviously a pretty high-level presentation, but yes, you can dig in by standard, you can dig in by student, you can dig in in that way, that crossover, like, you can pull up, I pulled up my daughter's, and I looked just at individual standards on sort of how she did. So you can get really granular, really go down a wormhole for a really long time. And I know you're a numbers guy, Ms. News, so it's something that you can really, yes, dig pretty deep down into.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't know, I guess.
You're up.
Good evening, how are you?
Hi, I'm very well, thank you. How are you?
Good, great presentation. I think overall, the district has a lot to be proud of. I certainly agree, what you presented, as well as what was available in the DART tool and comparing, I think our SGP's, as well as just our overall scores across the board, are something to be proud of. So I'm cautiously optimistic as well. I know sometimes when you initiate new curriculum, that there's, sometimes can be a dip, but overall, I'm optimistic. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, not directly related, but just thinking about how we can get kids more engaged in the 10th grade, because obviously not everybody is going to get a scholarship, but if there's something the school could do, schools could do to recognize people who had SGP's that increased so much, so that you're not just rewarding the top performers in the class, but anybody who's really putting in real effort, if there's some way we could think to recognize them, to help them go for it.
I love that, and it's actually something that we did in my school when I was there, is we recognized students with that high growth, right? And so when we talk about growth, 40 to 60 is considered typical growth. So we have a number of students who are showing high growth. We have a number of areas, you're all absolutely correct when you say we have a lot to be proud of. And so that certainly is an area that we will call out with our students who continue to really put the effort in and show the growth.
And if I could just add, because I think that was a great, no, I think that was a great recommendation, and we're kind of still new to the 10th grade requirement changing. And so recommendations like that, or suggestions like that, I think are really incredibly helpful. And we will have conversation at the high school about ways where we can recognize students who are putting in the effort that our grades, really, three through nine students always have, because it's not just 10th grade students who have taken the test in the past. So it really is about a shift in mindset.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up, policies.
Okay, back to me. So first, I'm just going to thank everyone who's contributed to the process of updating our policies, and specifically Mr. Kylie and our school committee policy subcommittee members, Mary Beckwith, Kathleen Amorall, thank you, also other folks from, you know, who have helped to inform some of the policies we're going to talk about tonight, Dr. Tebow, Mrs. Denisio, as they've also had significant input in developing some of the updated policies that we'll talk about tonight. And I just also want to acknowledge that policy is not the most glamorous part of our work, right? And so while it's not glamorous, what we have found is it's important that we have updated policies. And I really do thank the subcommittee and Mr. Kylie for taking this on. We're in our second year, we're getting through it, I think, in a really effective, process-oriented way. And at the same time this evening, I'm going to present some of our, update you as to where we are as a policy subcommittee, and I'm going to ask for the same thing Ms. Paveo just did, and that's a little grace in talking with fluidity about policy. So I'm going to do my best, but thank you seriously to all. And as usual, Mr. Kylie has set me up well to talk about this. But this evening, we are going to talk about Section D, fiscal management. We're also going to talk about Section I instruction and Section J students. And when we get to those, I'll talk a little bit about why we're taking them in a different order. But we're going to start with, of all things, we're going to talk about fiscal management. Mr. Kylie's not here tonight, so, but I think we're okay. All right, so as far as, I think the hardest part of this is this, ready? Okay, Policy DA, fiscal management goals. And so our proposed revision to fiscal management goals, again, Policy DA, is just to revise so that it better aligns to the MASC model. And that is really what we've done. There's some differing language, but overall, this mirrors what MASC has recommended with some just maybe notable revisions, things like where it says, "Achievement of the district purposes can best be achieved through", it said, "excellent fiscal management", I think Ms. Beckworth, we decided the word "sound" made better sense. So those are the kinds of, it might seem trivial, but at the same time, words do carry nuance, and we want to get close to as what we mean in policy. And one of the things that I know and experience in going through this with the subcommittee is what we're really, I think, trying to do is to streamline policy and make sure that policy that we're saying is actually policy. And that's some of what you're seeing in some of these edits. So that is the recommendation for Policy DA. I think I just go through all of them if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Policy DB is annual budget, and the proposed revisions, including changing his/her to their and he/she to they, and removing reference to state policy. And that is Policy DB. So for Policy DBD, that's budget planning, and the proposed revision is to change the word "children" to "students". So for Policy DBG, we, oh, sorry, really?
Yeah.
DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority.
Okay, okay, I believe you. DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority, is proposed revision, again, to better align with the MASC model and to change his or her to their. And then we have Policy DD, which is funding proposals and applications, and the proposed revision is to include grant procedures. Policy DI, do you have Policy DI in front of you?
No. DFD is the next one.
Oh, I know why, because we didn't make any revisions, so that's why.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that, thank you. I told you there'd be a few little hiccups. So the next one is DFD, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me get to DFD, because I have... Hmm. All right, just give me a minute.
That's the gate receipts that you and I talked about to the doctor.
No, I'm okay, I've got another whole packet right here. Always have backups, backups to the backups. All right, so just let me make sure. DBJ, DD, DI, DFD.
You got it.
All right, let me do this. All right, so DFD is gate receipts and admissions, and the proposed revision is to also add web-based Policy DJ is, oh, we will...
DI.
DI is now.
It's one.
I think.
Well...
We have different...
It's just one word.
All right, so Policy D...
I.
DI is... DI is, is we're taking out found desirable and replacing it with appropriate.
Can I put a hold on that? Can we talk about it?
Of course.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, if you want to wait till the end.
No, I'm fine with whatever you want.
So my only question, I'm fine with the language, but this just brings to mind, are we receiving quarterly financial statements? Have we ever received quarterly financial statements?
From?
From the, from the district. As to, because this says the school committee will receive quarterly financial statements from the superintendent, showing the financial condition of the school department. The reason why I bring this up, this is, has nothing to do with this administration. It's just down the road and where Whitman Hansen is right now, it's certainly.
I kind of thought that that's what you were going to say just then.
Did you really?
Yeah.
I just happened to, I've been following it and I don't know, I, I just, I just would like to see, make sure that, no big deal. I'd just like to make sure that moving forward.
No, okay. I, I mean, when, when, I'll discuss that with Mr. Kylie. We've certainly talked about that and you know what sort of the reporting looks like here at the committee level. We haven't done that since I've been here, but that doesn't mean that's not something that we, we could consider. And I know that Mr. Kylie and I have had this conversation and that he has agreed that that would be something.
Yeah, and like I said, nothing to do.
No, understood.
Jim's fabulous. I have the utmost faith and trust, but Jim's not going to be here forever and.
No, I don't say such a thing.
So I think it would just be nice to get into that habit, that routine.
Okay. So we'll, we'll discuss that. So.
That was a swear word.
Oh, we, we are, we're at DJ, thank you, which is purchasing. Proposed revision to reference the school business official and change he/she to they and change unit head to administrator. So again, some of this is just updating language to make it more current and relevant. All right. So now we have, I don't know why my, mine aren't aligning, but can I?
This is right.
DK.
DK. Okay. So now we have DK payment procedures, which is the proposed revision is to change his or her to their. And then we have DKC, expense reimbursements. And the proposed revision is to align the policy with the MASC model. So you'll see there's quite a bit of sort of red font in there, but it's not new language. It's just language that has been revised to better reflect what MASC has put out as their model language. And then we have DM, which is cash in school buildings. And really, we've done a couple of things. One is that we have, well, we've done one thing, we've changed the title.
That's it.
Yep, that's it. Cash in school buildings, it was expense reimbursements, but that was incorrect. So we updated that. And that is it for Section D.
Very good. Yep.
All right.
I think we're good.
Okay. So now I'll move on to Section I instruction, which is Policy IKF, graduation requirements. And the proposed revision is to update the graduation requirements, which reflects the school committee vote on March 24th, 2025. And next is IKFE, which is the competency determination policy title. And that's the proposed new policy, which reflects the school committee vote on January 27th, 2025. If you remember, we brought both of these changes to you last year after the, again, after question two, but what we didn't do was vote it in as policy. And so we've brought that to the subcommittee and now to the full committee for your approval, so that that would reflect as policy. And then finally, we have Section J, which is students. And that is Policy JKAA, which is physical restraint prevention and behavior support. And this proposed revision is to better align with the Dartmouth Public School Practices in 603 CMR 46. Part of the reason that we're looking at this now or decided to look at this now is we're reviewing all of our policies. We're in process of reviewing all of our policies, which I think were last reviewed somewhere back in maybe 2013. So this is one of the ones that we decided that we needed to take a look at sooner rather than later, because we are currently undergoing a special education review with DESI. And Mrs. Dinesio and her team looked at that policy and thought that since we're now, we're actually submitting these policies to, to the DESI team for their review, that when we're looking at some of the policies and we recognize that there are some inaccuracies that we want to respond in, in real time, as, as those are, are policies that are actually being assessed right now, not only by us, but by the Department of Education. So those are the policies before you this evening.
Very good. So this is a first reading. Any questions at this point? Yes, Mr. Nunes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to go back to Policy DFD, gate receipts and admissions. And I had this, I had a conversation with the superintendent this afternoon on this and, you know, it talks about admission of school events shall be deposited with the town treasurer, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about, you know, plays and concerts and school fundraisers and everything else. I mean, those monies, those funds do end up with the town treasurer, but they go through a student activity account or an athletic revolving account or a music roof, you know, the music revolving account for the concession stand type of deal. Then they end up with the town treasurer. So it, you know, it almost says that this money is going to directly go to the treasurer instead of going through the process that it goes through, type of deal. I'm just, I, I, and again, please, I'm, I'm not a wordsmith, so, but I'm just looking at this and saying, you know, somebody reading this is going to be, may be a little bit confused.
So, and we did have a conversation about that earlier and we agreed that we could take a second look at that, this and bring it back to the committee with a revision.
Sure.
That's, that was, that was my only concern, so.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
Follow up?
Great job.
Follow up to that, and forgive me for not knowing this, but all the student activity accounts, all the, all the different revolving accounts that are available, they are part of the towns, through the town treasurer?
Yeah. The only thing that's not through the town treasurer, to my knowledge, would be the individual PTO accounts.
Gotcha, which, that makes sense.
Which comes to you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll follow up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So next up is the superintendent's evaluation. We had a subcommittee of Ms. Amorall and Mr. Nunes. Would you guys like to share the evaluation?
Motion to approve.
I think we need a little more than that.
A little bit more than that, yeah, that's fine. I was just trying. I'm sorry. I'm being, I'm just being, I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, my thanks to everyone on the committee for their input. Thank you to, my thanks to Kathleen, who, you know, compiles everything because of my fantastic computer skills. So, but I do, I do appreciate that. So, and, you know, thank you for, Dr. Saban McGuire for being, consider we're one meeting late with this, but Murphy's Law is always takes hold, so it is what it is. This is the end of psycho, this is, you know, some seven, eight pages and such. And just a little bit of a background, this is something that the Department of Education has put out. There are a number of goals and such and performances. And it is, you know, it's, you know, did not meet some progress, significant progress, met and exceeds. And as we go through this, and I know I said this last year and I'm a broken record, we're a broken record, I apologize. And, but just, you know, as the training course that I took a number of years ago when this came out, when DESI came down, you know, the thing you have to be very careful of is always evaluating the superintendent as exceeds expectations, because, you know, you're almost sitting there and saying, there's nothing else he or she can do, you know, they're, they're at the top of their game, they're doing everything absolutely perfect. And then all of a sudden, if they have a hiccup and they go from exceeds to meeting expectations, it's like, okay, what happens? And you're trying to scramble to come up with what happened and, you know, give explanations to and such. So, you know, we've done that and we go there. And this is, this is a summative of all the, everybody that put together. There were a couple of instances that exemplary was there, but it was not enough to record an exemplary per se. So that's, that's how we, Kathleen and I went through this. So let me go through this. Under professional practice, and by the way, again, this has to be done in open session, this is, and this is, you know, once, if this is approved tonight, this becomes part of our personnel file type of deal. So, under professional practice goals, we have met. Student learning goals was met. District improvement goals were met, okay? Under step two, which is assesses performance on standards and such, under instructional leadership, leadership was proficient. Under management and operations.
We have two. Oh, proficient.
Yeah, was proficient.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a little sneaky in there we got to fix. I just noticed that. Under, and we went through this.
That was my computer.
Under family and community engagement was proficient. Under professional culture, also proficient. Overall, step three, overall substantive performance based on step one and two of the ratings, she was proficient. Comments that committee members put in, Dr. June Saban McGuire is a strong leader whose performance has resulted in significant measurable progress across the Dartmouth Public School District. Her leadership is defined by exemptional strength in systematic management and operational excellence, which has provided the stable, efficient foundation necessary to execute the district's ambitious new strategic plan. She has ensured the district maintained flawless compliance with all state and federal regulations, including Chapter 70 requirements and special ed mandates, minimizing district risks and maintaining public trust. I would rate her as proficient overall for her substantive evaluation. I look forward to continuing our work together. Another comment in that category, Dr. Saban McGuire has shown herself to be data-driven, ethically motivated, child-focused superintendent who is getting things done. The vision of One Dartmouth, she is implementing our mission of cultivating a safe, supportive and inclusive learning environment that empowers all students to become compassionate, informed and contributing members of our local and global community. She shares the vision and the mission every day in effective communication, fiscal management and support of our educators, staff, families and caregivers. So that's that. Under, let's see, what do we got here? Superintendent's performance goals. It says superintendents must identify at least one smart learning goal, one professional practice goal and two to four district improvement goals. Goals should be SMART, and that's a capital S-M-A-R-T, and aligned to at least one focus indicator from the standards for effective administrative leadership. Under student learning goals, it says increase access for all students to high quality educational material in alignment with district's strategic plans, resulting in increased growth and achievement for all students using multiple measures. And that was met. Professional practice goal, enhance my data analysis, instructional leadership and strategy development skills by actively engaging in the new, I'm sorry, my fault, in the work of the new superintendent induction program, networking with superintendent colleagues and collaborating with my superintendent coach. And that was met. District improvement goal one, by May of 2025, Dartmouth Public Schools will be fully engaged in implementing the 2024 to 2029 strategic plan in alignment with the proposed timeline outlined in the plan. And that was met. Strategic improvement goal two, sharing responsibility. It says the plan will present it to the one community, the One Dartmouth community in a variety of forums to build a community-wide understanding of the mission, vision, core values, theories of actions, focus area, objectives, initiatives and action steps. And that was met. Under, excuse me, under superintendent performance rating for standard one instructional leadership, curriculum ensures that all instructional staff design effective and rigorous standards based units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable income, outcome, I'm sorry, and that's proficient. One B, instruction, ensure that practice in all settings reflect high expectation regardless of the content and quality of effort of work. Engage all students and are personalized to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs, interests and levels of readiness. And that was proficient. Assessment, ensure that all principal and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth and understanding and make necessary adjustments to their practice when students are not learning. And that was proficient. Evaluation, ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulation and contract provisions. And that was proficient. Data informed decision-making, excuse me, use multiple sources of evidence related to student learning, including state, district and school assessment to result in growth data to inform school and district goals and improve organizational performances, educator effectiveness and student learning. And that was proficient. And the overall rating for standard one was proficient. Some comments that were made, Dr. Saban McGuire has demonstrated strong leadership in introducing high-quality evidence-based and structured material into our schools, including CKLA and Carnegie Math. She has led and supported the piloting of several new curricula at all levels. She recognizes and, she recognizes and supports professional development for teachers to improve effectiveness and data drives her decisions. For superintendent's performance rating, standard two, management and operations, under environment, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, emotional and social needs. That was proficient. Human resources, management and development, implement a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction development and career growth that promotes high quality and effective practices. That was proficient. Scheduling and management information, uses systems to ensure optimal use of data and time for teaching, learning and collaboration, minimizing disruption and distractions for school-level staff. That was proficient. Laws, law, ethics and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws and mandates, school committee policies, collective bargaining agreements and ethical guidelines. And that was proficient. Fiscal systems, develop a budget that supports the district's vision, mission and goals, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals and available resources. And that was proficient. And the overall rating for that was proficient. Some comments that were made, Dr. Saban McGuire oversees a tight budget which moves our district vision, mission and goals forward as evidenced by the budget, subcommittee, communication is her focus and her strength. as evidenced by the budget subcommittee. Communication is her focus and her strength. She communicates a shared vision clearly, and she is able to get others on board. She is a big-picture oriented but able to bring it down to a manageable chunk. She's goal-directed and intentional in all efforts. She's future-focused but deals with immediate needs and crisis very well. She has been transparent with unions. This is attributed to her ability to make processes less adversarial than in the past during which she has paid attention to regulations and laws, and she is involved in policy revision. The, then we have superintendent's performance rating for standard three, family and communities. Three A engagement, actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. And that was proficient. Sharing responsibility, continually collaborates with families and community stakeholders to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. And that was proficient. Communication, engages in regular two-way culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performances. That was proficient. Family concerns, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. And that was proficient. And the overall rating for that category was proficient. Some comments that were made, Dr. Saber McGuire engages our school families and larger community with strong communication skills as evidenced by her letters to families, strategic plan presentations to PTOs, and community at large. She communicates with families through multiple means, including forum, letters, parent square, updates on the website, and engages with the community through town meeting and her attendance at student events. In writing and orally, she is clear and concise. She leads with authenticity, and she is very caring. Professional standard four, student, sorry, superintendent performance rating for standard four, professional culture, for A, commitment to high standards fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching, and learning with high expectations and achievement for all. And that was proficient. Cultural proficiency ensures that students and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively and culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected. And that was proficient. Communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. And that was proficient. Continuous learning, developed and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, current research, best practice, and a theory to continually adapt practices and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice. And that was proficient. Shared vision, successfully and continually engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. And that was proficient. Managing conflict, employs strategy for responding to disagreements and dissent, constructively resolving conflict, and building consensus throughout the district or school committee. That was proficient. And the overall rating for professional culture was proficient. Couple of comments made, Dr. Saber McGuire effectively connects our actions in the Dartmouth Public Schools to our shared vision of One Dartmouth and the implementation of the district's strategic plan. At every school committee meeting, she highlights what is going on in our district and aligns it to the focus areas. Dr. Saber McGuire manifests our core values, personal excellence, and responsibility, respect for self and others, inclusive, equity, and belonging, diverse opportunities, and ethical commitments. She is a strong communicator as is, as evidenced by her convocation speech in August of 2024, her letters to faculty in September of 24, and to families in October and November of 2024, and in one-on-one meetings. She demonstrates high standards for herself and others. She rewards good works, such as through the Green Apple Awards, which recognize achievements. She holds everyone to high standards, and she can build trust through open, honest communication and providing data to back up what she is saying. And that, my committee members and to the general public, is the evaluation of Dr. June Saber McGuire is compiled.
Thank you, Mr. Nunes. Does anyone have any comments before we get a motion to approve?
Just a couple of things that, that I would say. I had to remember myself that this was last year's evaluation, not this year's. So that puts me in good place for exemplary for next year because I, like all educators, are always striving to meet exemplary standards. And that certainly has not changed in the course of my career and certainly not since I've been here. I'm always humbled more by the comments than by the ratings themselves because, you know, it's awkward to listen to people say nice things about you. And it was actually the core of my convocation speech this past year about saying thank you when somebody says something in a way that appreciates the work you do. But so I thank you, and at the same time, please know that I'm also humbled by the work that I do here every day in Dartmouth and extremely committed, as I think you know, to this community and the school community. I also want to say that, like, everything that you've talked about is, like, it's not, it's not my show, right? I have a team around me, including the central office team that I work with every day, the principals, the school leaders, the teachers that are out there doing our work every day, everybody from, you know, again, our custodial staff, our food service staff, our ESPs, our lunch monitors. I mean, when you think about the number of people that it takes to support a school district of over 3,000 students, you know, it's, it's a pretty monumental task, and that can't be done by any single person. But what my responsibility is as a superintendent is to do the best job that I can to provide the team, and when I say team, I mean all of those people because we're all part of that One Dartmouth team, to, again, strive for, and I say this humbly and at the same time competitively, for continuous improvement. So I won't back off of that, but I totally, you know, again, appreciate the support that I have. When I say team, what team I didn't talk about is this team, and that's the school committee team. And so I listened earlier to families come up, or a couple of parents come up and talk about the support they need from this committee. And I can say unequivocally that this is an incredibly supportive school committee. And I am thankful to work alongside you. So that's it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I guess somebody just made the second. I've never done that.
I'll make a second. Fine. I'll second it.
I can second.
So, motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Mr. Noon to accept the evaluation of the superintendent. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Unanimously passes? Thank you all. And now let's just swing into the superintendent's update.
Right back to me. You've heard a lot of me tonight, from me. So, as always, though, we're always pleased to share our update with the committee and the community about what is going on in the Dartmouth schools. And as usual, we will touch on the strategic plan, a few things I already talked about. But I just will just reiterate that under teaching and learning, we really are truly focused in the job embedded professional development and recognizing that that's really how we can best support our teachers in real, in action. Just this past week, I would mention that the Dartmouth High School lead teacher team kicked off what we hope is going to be a really strong, year-long professional learning strand with an, with a consultant that we've worked with, actually with Teaching Learning Alliance. Her name is Cynthia Smith. And this work is important because it's focusing on instructional leadership and coaching, and how do we get the folks that really are sitting there in those seats as lead teachers, how do we give those folks even the kind of professional development and ongoing coaching that they need to be able to have that kind of high-level impact that we want for our teachers and our teacher leaders? I already mentioned CKLA, so I won't talk about that. But I do want to say that I was able to get out into some of the classrooms during the week. Mrs. Paveo was out there every day, right alongside with the consultant and meeting with the teams across the district. And I really am so truly impressed with the teachers and with how they have taken on this curriculum in a way that when you walk into classrooms right now, you can see the impact that teaching and that, that is happening related to teaching and learning in real time. And I know a couple of our committee members have been out into classrooms and have seen this for themselves. I'm not saying, again, that everything's perfect, but what we do here largely from our teachers is how incredibly engaged the kids are. And as a matter of fact, just one of our parents who spoke tonight talked about how his daughter is coming home and talking about the curriculum and talking about the content, and she's incredibly excited about what she's learning in school every day. And that's what we want. We want our students and our teachers to be excited about teaching and learning because there is supposed to be joy in the classroom. And we're happy to see when that really is taking root in real time. But positive feedback, I'm going to mention, because I know that there's talk about it, that grades have come out at Dartmouth High School. I think they came out this past Friday they were submitted. And I know that we have tried, or the high school has implemented new grading practices, not a policy, they've implemented new grading practices. Just so we're clear, the only folks that can set policy in the school district is this governing body. So there's a difference between practice and policy. And I think sometimes we use those words interchangeably and not, you know, on purpose, but it just happens. But these are, this is a change in practices. This is the first year of implementation. There's leeway this year. We're working through it. Changing something like this is no different than implementing a new curriculum. Whenever you're changing something, it's going to come with some challenges along the way. One of the things that I would remind us all of is that this is actually part of the Dartmouth High School School Improvement Plan. And that was presented publicly. And you can see, if you go back and look at their school improvement plan and back to, I think, presentations from last year, you'll see that the high school team did talk about this. That being said, it's going to take time for folks to get used to it and for practices to become more comfortable for people and for consistency. The other thing that I just happened, again, and this is very preliminary level, but I did ask Dr. Tebow to look at grades for me today and to look at grades from this year as opposed to last year and to give me, and actually he was able to do it, and to provide me with that information. And overall, our students' grades, our students in grades nine through 12, their grades are higher across the board. And there are fewer failures. And so that was really at the heart of some of the discussion that you heard about grading policy, grading practice at the high school. And you can't help it. But what I have asked the school, a high school team to do is to come here before the committee in the coming, at a coming school committee meeting, and to give an update in an overall presentation about where we are with grading practices at Dartmouth High School. But I'm really pleased to say that it looks like the teachers and the students overall, I'm not saying there aren't challenges, but overall, student grades are looking really strong here at Dartmouth High School. So, budget, capital improvement, HR, budget, did we meet after the MSBA vote? Because I, I don't think we did. So, because I wanted to highlight that. It didn't come up tonight already. But I do think that it's something that we should celebrate. So, obviously, we know that town meeting supported us, and I would say they overwhelmingly supported us in moving forward with the $250,000 for the feasibility study. And that was anticipation of an MSBA vote, which I know the committee is aware that the MSBA board did vote to support the Dartmouth High School roof project. So we'll be moving forward with the feasibility study. You'll be hearing more about that as we hear because it is a process. And then there'll be the next steps, right? There are next steps coming. We will be, hopefully, with the committee's approval, we'll be moving forward on submitting a statement of interest for new school. I mean, that would be something that we're going to talk about, and we'll be talking about it before the end of this year. So those are some really big, I think, items under budget and capital improvement that we should be celebrating. And again, Mr. Kylie's not here, but I really thank him for his hard work and I believe really just positioned us really well to be supported by MSBA. On HR front, I mean, we're still, we still face ongoing challenges, and it's really around the critical positions in special education. Mrs. Denicio has, I know, been out there trying to recruit. She's found some people for some key support positions and has done a really good job. She's tireless in her efforts, and I thank her and Mrs. Redlong because I know they're out there really working toward finding the right candidates for these really important positions. So, under safe and supportive schools, we talked already earlier about, you know, something here at the high school and how our safe and supportive school teams really came into action. But we've also now expanded the vape detectors. There are more of them in the building right now. And we are still working with our admin team to come up with the best plan of action to how to respond to vape, acts of vaping at school in a way that's not only going to be preventative, but also make it really clear to students that that's not acceptable behavior in school. Again, crucial foundational, I think, commitment, and you have done a great job in really supporting us. So I will also mention for Mr. Parati, some of you saw his video last, at our last committee meeting. There is a link on the website to it. Well, Dartmouth High School, if you remember, they were going, the team was going, I think, the next night to Braintree for the award ceremony. And they have indeed won the top statewide honors. They won the grand prize in the Mass DOT Safe Streets Smart Trips High School Video Contest for their very original short film, Coach Pea's Walk to School Class. If you haven't seen it, give it a look. It's not that long, and it is quite entertaining. So, under family and community engagement, I mentioned earlier, communication is key. We have begun the process, as I said, of getting out into PTO meetings. And we want to make sure that all stakeholders here, where we are. I want to mention to you that a number of people from the community have commented to me on our presentation at the select board meeting. So it was interesting to me that people connected the work of schools to the presentation that when we were invited to the select board meeting, people from outside the school community, which was nice because that is also a community we really need to connect with. And I think that's important. As a matter of fact, I think it's this, this Friday, the cheerleaders are going to the council on aging to engage in the line dancing with our seniors. And then I just also want to thank Cody Haddad and Gary Carrero. You heard Mr. Silva mention that ongoing collaboration. Mr. Kylie and I met with them this past week. We are planning quarterly meetings, and it's really a great time for us to have ongoing dialogue about needs of our schools, how it fits into the ongoing needs of the community, and for us to be establishing important relationships as we go into not just budget season, but we are entering budget season. And so we'll, that will be the focus of a lot of what we talk about in the coming months. And so I thank you for, you know, your, your commitment to- So I thank you for, you know, your commitment to supporting us, and I'm very grateful to have this committee, and we'll continue to work on continuous improvement. So, thank you.
I like it. Thank you. Great update. I will say, I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Thomas at the Quinn School today and see CKLA in action, and I did see joy, and I saw caring, and throughout their other classes. It was a great visit. I also wanted to mention that last Wednesday, a number of us went to New Bedford Greater Votech, and we had a great informational session and tour, heard how they're using AI in some interesting ways, and ways that they're thinking of bringing in or allowing students to access their programs who might not have won the lottery, but could still access. Fairhaven is in a trial phase with that, and maybe it's something we will consider. But I thought it was, it was great, and other people from the Dartmouth government were there.
Do you mind if I just add one thing to that that I meant to mention? But yes, Cody Haddad was there, we had some conversation with him, and I had some conversation afterwards, and we talked about the idea of working with the school committee and with other town officials to set up a day, hopefully in January, we have some dates that we'll be sharing with you, where we do something similar here at Dartmouth High School that we did at greater New Bedford Tech, not, I mean, most people know Dartmouth High School, but at the same time, we thought we would maybe do a school visit here, then go to the middle school, and then one of our neighboring communities, and go take a look at one of the newer schools that's been built, to start to build some understanding around why it's important that we're paying attention right now to our facilities. So you'll be hearing more about that.
So I also didn't know if people were aware, both in the greater community and here on the committee, that the state is looking for comments and feedback on the formula for chapter 70, as they're thinking to rework it, and I think, you know, voices should be heard, and I'm just going to say that there is an in-person session in Lakeville November 19th, and there's a virtual session November 18th, just putting it out there, and...
And Mr. Kylie will be at the November 19th.
19th in Lakeville, and I'm planning to go.
Yep.
And then just...
I'm out of town. Never feels.
Okay. And coming up this week, a number of us will be going to the MAS, M-A-S-C-M-A-S-S conference and looking forward to that, and is there any comments from anybody else?
I just got one, you know, I know Ms. C. and Mr. Oliveri were here, type of, they'll talk about the bands, and that was great, and a long weekend for the kids, that's no doubt about it. They got back here just about 10 o'clock last night, and on a serious note, thank you to Fire District Two and also the Dartmouth Police Department for an escort that they gave them in from Farnes Corner Road, so that was appreciated, the kids appreciated that. The cheerleaders had a competition this past weekend, and they came out in first place up at Bridgewater Rainham, so now they're on to the regionals this coming week, I think, Sunday, I'm not sure where, but I'll keep tabs on them, and our football team is back home Friday night at 6 o'clock against Plymouth South, so hope to see everybody there.
Anybody else?
No.
No.
Okay. Our next regular session meeting for the school committee is scheduled for Monday, December 8th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, to be held here at the Dartmouth High School Library Media Center. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, second by Mr. Noon, all in favor, we don't do a roll call.
No, just...
All in favor.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? I don't think so.
Happy Thanksgiving.